The August 21st, 2018 meeting of the City Council of the City of Springfield, Illinois is called order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Will do.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Señor.
Here.
Alder-Wardman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman De Senzo.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Here.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Henauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, quorum is present. Thank you. This time I'd like to call Caroline Brown Ford for a short presentation with regards to Southeast alumni celebration coming up in September.
Well, good evening, everyone. We find it a pleasure to be able to come before you today to share what we think was going to be an exciting time here in Springfield. Come September 1st, we are hosting Southeast -- the Springfield Southeast High School will celebrate 50 years in existence, and we are going to celebrate with a gala at the Crown Plaza. You can register if you are a Southeast alum at the Southeast website. You can go to Eventbrite and Google and search for Southeast High School, and/or you can go to the high school and register. So Mayor, get your registration.
That's right.
So we're looking forward to not only celebrating 50 years of being a high school in Springfield, we are also celebrating Springfield, the east side, and standing tall as Spartans and recognizing that, you know, we serve a purpose being here. And, you know, Southeast has put out some pretty good leaders, so we're pretty pleased about that. So we thank you for the opportunity to come before you to share this excitement with you that we have and to invite you to join us if you'd like. And if you have any questions, we do have some information we'd like to give you, so...
And again, that's September...
September 1st.
And how do they get...
It begins at 5:30, Crown Plaza here in Springfield.
Can they go online and get tickets?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? And what's that website?
It is.
Are they going to call the school, I guess?
You can call the school, or you can go to www eventbrite.com and search for Southeast.
Very good.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And my wife's a Southeast Spartan grad.
No, not too hard.
And actually, just for the record, she received a better education than I did because she put forward the effort. That's what it's all about. Doesn't matter what the building looks like, it matters about the effort you put in. Very good. At this time, I'd like to -- is Justin, you're off here?
Yep.
If you'd like to come forward for proclamation presentation on Illinois Senior Olympics. Many of you probably know we do have Senior Olympics here in Springfield. I know it goes way back to when my dad was mayor, they used to have SRD, which helped run the event. Yep, that's right. And so with that, the good news is for Alderman, over 50 years of age, you can be a participant. As well as any elected official or employee.
This qualifies me.
Right? Is that correct? Over 50 years of age, myself included. And so it reads, "Whereas the Illinois Senior Olympics ISO began in 1977 in Springfield, Illinois, and today the ISO competition has become the longest-running state games in the United States that are sanctioned by the National Senior Games Association. And whereas the initial games brought together 122 athletes who competed over the years, the participation has increased immensely. The Illinois Senior Olympics now hosts up to 1,200 male and female athletes aged 50 years and older each year, with every other year being a qualifying year. And whereas in an effort to help promote healthy lifestyles for adults, over 20 events now encompass the Illinois Senior Olympic Games, including team sports of basketball, volleyball, and softball, and other non-athletic competitions, including bridge, Wii bowling, and bags. And whereas the Illinois Senior Olympics is an open state games, which hosts athletes from not only Illinois but other states as far away as California, Arizona, Florida, and Georgia. And whereas the oldest athlete of the 2017 Games is Dee Paul Miller, who at the age of 100 competes at the state and national levels in cycling 5K time trials, track 50, 100, and 200 meter races, and field running and standing long jump. He is still a competing and veteran of the Senior Olympic Games. Dee Paul Miller continues to be an awe-inspiring for generations of athletes. And whereas Springfield is proud of our own athletes, including John Williams, who placed thirds -- John here? Come on up, John. John Williams, who placed third at the 2017 National Senior Games in the triathlon, along with Carol Schimpf, who was inducted into the Illinois Department of Aging Senior Illinois Hall of Fame this year. Is she here? Okay. And whereas the Illinois Senior Olympics could not be possible without the countless volunteers, 200 in fact, that helped run the games smoothly and successfully year after year. And whereas the City of Springfield is honored to be a partner in these games, and we are truly grateful to all the athletes for showing us that age is truly just a number and does not dictate your state of mind and lifestyle. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, James O. Langfelder, Mayor of the City of Springfield, Illinois, together with the City Council and residents, do hereby proclaim that Tuesday, August 21st, 2018, be Illinois Senior Olympics Day in the City of Springfield, and thank you for your 41 years of inspiring athletes of all ages."
Thank you very much, everybody, and thank you all for having us here. We're really proud to bring these events to the City of Springfield every year. I'm from Springfield originally, so it means a lot to me to be able to bring people to my hometown to see what we're all about here. So once again, thank you very much.
Thank you for the recognition.
I know it was a little too late to do anything about it for today, but seeing as how the Sliders owner Todd Miller is here, I'd like to recognize that one of his players was named the Prospect League Player of the Year today, Dick Miller. Todd, if you want to say a few words about Dick's performance this year and what kind of batting average in the voting?
Actually, three guys become All-Stars this year. One was our best pitcher Alec Harris from Maryville, Red Shirt Senior. He's going to get a good look. Dick Miller's probably going to get drafted in the first couple of rounds this upcoming year. He's going to be a senior this year at Towson University. Seventeen home runs this summer. I think second place was 12. And then Adam Lopez, our team's best all-around player, also was the third baseman All-Star, if anybody came out and seen him play. University of San Diego player, great player. But, I mean, can't say much about Dick. He came out every day, really just crushed the ball, finished with a .373 batting average, second place, I believe, in triples, third place in doubles, third in RBIs in the league. But then again, yeah, leading with 17 home runs. He was certainly the league MVP and certainly happy to have him here in Springfield. And played with us this summer. Great family in Buffalo, New York. They came out to Springfield for a lot of games this year, so that was good to see his dad out. But no, Dick was probably, other than David Jacobs, who's currently playing for the Toronto Blue Jays, probably was one of the best bats that have ever played in Springfield. So that was really good for us to have him this season.
Thank you, Todd.
Appreciate it.
We'll go into the zoning portion of our meeting. First item on the agenda is docket number 2018-040 for a portion of the property located at 1201 South Dirksen Parkway in Ward III. Petitioner is Carols LLC as contract purchaser-developer. Present zoning classification is I-1 Light Industrial Section 155.040. Requested zoning reclassification to B-1 Highway Business Service District Section 155.033 for approximately 1.41 acres located at the northwest corner of South Dirksen Parkway and South Grand Avenue East. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is approval. Chair will entertain a motion.
I make the motion that we...
Second a motion.
Moving and seconded to accept the Regional Planning Commission recommendation. Any discussion?
I just want to say that this is a significant investment for Springfield's east side, and it shows that businesses understand the value of being on the east side of Springfield. So I really want to give a shout-out to them for making the investment.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? All those in favor, the motion vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-041 for the property located at 700 block of North Bond, 400 block of West Carpenter, 500 block of Herndon Street, 400 block of West Miller Street, and 500 block of West Miller Street, which constitute six tracts of land in Ward V. Petitioner is Memorial Health Systems and Memorial Medical Center. Present zoning classification, Office District Section 155.020, R2, Single Family and Duplex Residence District Section 155.017, R5B, General Residence and Office District Section 155.021, and R5C, Office District Section 155.022, S3, Central Shopping District Section 155.032. Requested zoning relief, reclassification of all tracks not currently classified as S3 to S3, Central Shopping District Section 155.032. And pursuant to Section 155.175, establishment of a conditional permitted uses, Section 155.183, conditional permitted use accessory off-street parking not on the same lot as the use served, and Section 155.032C1. Accessory off-street parking lots in the S3 district for a conditional permitted use for Track V to be as an accessory off-street parking lot to serve the facility to be constructed on the south side of West Miller Street. For Track VI to be used as an accessory off-street parking lot to serve the existing facility located at 404 Herndon and Section 155.212. General provisions variances in Section 155.213. Applications for variances for a variance of a Section 155.480I landscape screening and lighting regulations, transitional buffer yard requirement and landscaping for the reduction of the transitional buffer yard required along the south line of Tracks II, III, and IV, and the west line of Track V to 0 feet, and Section 155.212. General provisions variances in Section 155.213. Applications for variances for a variance from a signed regulations of Section 155.320 through Section 155.325. Commercial and industrial district signed regulations to allow the signed regulations for the S2 zoning district to serve as the signed regulations for Tracks I through VI. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval of reclassification to S3 and approval of the CPUs for accessory off-street parking lots as stated in the petition, as well as approval of the variances to utilize S2 signed regulations in the S3 district and to reduce the TBY to 0 feet, limited to the south sides of Tracks II, III, and IV, but deny the TBY variance of the west property line of Track V. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission as per the amended petitioner's request, withdrawing from the petition the variance of requests of 155.480I transitional buffer yard for Track V, west property line. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission as per the amended petitioner's request.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation as amended and seconded. Any discussion? All those -- is anybody in the audience want to comment on this? Very good. All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. And that concludes our zoning portion of the meeting. At this time, the Chair recognizes Treasurer Buscher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund in the month of July had a beginning balance of $3,902,546. We took in total receipts of $10,311,873. We had total disbursements in the month of July of $7,743,472, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance in July of $6,470,947. That concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you very much. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to -- I don't know, Todd, if you wanted to give a wrap-up of today's season or this year's season, if you'd like? Todd Miller from the Sliders.
Didn't you just do that?
That was kind of a wrap-up, but I didn't know if you had anything else you wanted to add? I should have done it all at once.
Pretty good.
See, Chris, you were just ahead of your time.
Let you guys all get one of those before we start up. It's kind of a -- the first page is just a quick overview, kind of everything I'm going to say, so that way you just have the data and numbers written in front of you. The other three pages are basically zip codes and locations where at least one person was in the stadium this year or came to Springfield from each of those zip codes. So those are those other pages as well. So we actually had a great season this year. For some reason, even with Dick and Adam and Alec and Ben and all the All-Stars we had, we decided to lose our last seven games in a row and not make the postseason, which did not make me very excited. But having said that, based on average attendance, going to 2017, this is based on the first line on that page there, we were tied for 64th in the nation. There's over 400 collegiate wood bat teams, and we were 64th last year. We had 29 home games with one being rained out, which is the same as this year. We had one rain out, so 29 home games. We had 29,532 in attendance last summer over the two months. Averages out to 1,018 per game. These are all numbers that came statistically from Ballpark Digest, all accurate and factual information. This year, in 2018, we were sole possession of 45th place. Again, 29 home games, so the data is apples to apples. We had 37,200 in attendance, good for 1283 a game. So over the same amount of games, 29, we had an increase of over 7,600 patrons during the season, which on average is 265 more per game, which gives us 26% increase in attendance from last year to this year. The reason that I put those in there, also based on our total attendance. So that was based on averages, those first ones, with 64th and 45th. Based on total attendance, we were ranked 33rd in the nation with 37,200 people in attendance. I mean, these numbers are pretty huge. Anything in summer wood bat, from over, like I said, over 400 teams, us being in one of the top five leagues in the Prospect League, which I think very highly of. Obviously, we get great talent in here like Dick Miller and Adam Lopez, two guys that are certainly going to make it to the major league level at one point in the next four years, I'd say. Before I get into the stadium things, I mean, I know we talked about, obviously, the money we received and things like that. So as you can see, I mean, getting an extra 76 -- over 7,600 patrons by increasing our radius. So what we had done the last year was we basically did a 30-mile radius around Springfield. This year, we increased everything to over 90 miles, but solidly 90 miles. We did heavy advertising. As it says in here, you know, we went as far out as Quincy to the west, Peoria to the north, but we even hit parts of Cankey and other areas up north as well, past Champaign to the east, and as far south as St. Louis. And all the data I gave you guys also does not include the Beach Boys concert, the D2 Midwest Regional we had, any of Robert Morris games, any of the high school games. I mean, any of those, those are all additional things that we brought in this year on top of this data. So everything here is just solely based on the Sliders' 29 home games. That also doesn't include our military All-Star game we had either, because that's not technically part of the Prospect League regular season. So I wanted to let you guys know that as well. Based on averages from Omaha, Nebraska, what they do, and then this is also confirmed in our league by the Terre Haute Rex, their CVB did a very similar study, and they say based on averages, I round to $75 a person, but it's like $74.83 a person, I think is what they say, something like that. So based on each person that comes into your stadium, that's what's brought into your economy. So for the Sliders, being able to bring in 37,200 people just in baseball, that's $2.79 million brought into Springfield by the Sliders over the summer. And that is just our 29 home games, again, not the Beach Boys, not anything else, that D2 Midwest Regional that we brought in. Everything like that is not included in this. So for bringing in 2.79 million, I feel like that's pretty good for a summer league baseball team coming into here. And based on that 7,600 increase this year, I mean, that's roughly about $575,000 increase. So not that I want to say we can attribute all of that to that 20K that was spent, but 20K and bringing back in 575, I felt like was money pretty well spent. All of that, I was actually surprised to see myself as we were going through. I wasn't exactly certain how everything finished up. I mean, everything we submit at the end of the game to the league, which then they submit to Ballpark's Digest, and then they come back with the data and give us all these numbers. And I think that, I mean, that's really huge, and we're really excited for where we're at. I don't know if you guys had seen any of the other teams in our league, but I mean, we finished in fourth place in attendance in our league. Chillicothe does an amazing job. They average over 2 -- or close to 2,000 people a game. Danville's the same, and then Kokomo with the number-one ballpark in the nation for collegiate wood bat, rated by Forbes and Ballpark Digest, and they're slightly above us by maybe 100 people a game. So what we were able to do here this year was really good for us. As you can see on those zip codes as well, just to touch base on that one, 251 different zip codes in the state of Illinois were -- came into the Robin Roberts Stadium during one of our 29 home games. At least one person from each of those zip codes came in. This came from the credit card transaction. So anybody that paid cash, we don't exactly have that data, so it could be much higher than that, but at least for 251. And there are 1,569 zip codes in the state of Illinois. So we basically got 16% of the zip codes of all of the whole state to come out to Robin Roberts, at least for one game this year. So I think that's pretty impressive for us to be able to do that. Also, I don't know if anybody followed with Ballpark's Digest this year for Robin Roberts. We were actually in the Elite Eight this year for best ballparks in the nation with all the upgrades and updates and things that we've done over the last couple of years. We've never been ranked ever probably in the top 100. For sure, we were never in the top 50. This year, to start as -- it's kind of like March Madness bracket, I guess is my best way to put it. They started with the top 64 teams, and then they kind of go down. We were actually ranked 30th to start the bracket, knocked off a three seed right away to keep advancing, and got to the Elite Eight, which we were 15-vote shy of making the final four. So that pretty much puts Springfield on the map as far as ballparks go. And we had a lot of people come out from major leagues and just other leagues in general to come out and see what we're doing. We have new teams coming into our league, like Cape Girardeau this for the 2019 season, so they came out to several Springfield Sliders games this year to basically try to mimic our operation, because, well, I don't want to toot my own horn, but we're the best ran operation in the Prospect League, and we do a really good job with what we have. And obviously, bringing in the talent that we did this year, you know, speaks volume. We partnered with various types of advertising companies, from radio to -- we were on the SMTD buses through Hawk Transit, certainly many television stations, magazines, newspapers, including social media. We had actually spent over $75,000 in advertising this year. I know we were going to try to limit down what we had done in the past, which we had spent over $100,000 two years ago, about $80,000 last year, and then we kept cutting. We were going to cut down to about 40 this year, and then when we received the 20 from you, that was putting us back up to 60. But with the deals we were negotiating, I felt we got better deals by being able to be at the $75,000 number, so we ended up doing that. And then obviously, with the increase in attendance and certainly helping us go up 26%, I think that that's huge, and it was the right decision for us to do so. So we certainly appreciate that, and I think the city here appreciates that as well with all the restaurants, gas. And again, this number doesn't include any additional money spent from our host families. I mean, we had 32 players, so all the host families are bus drivers. We had at least 40 bus drivers that had to come through here just on the home -- on our side that stay the night here and eat here. All the away teams come in, they use 10 to 11 hotel rooms per night. So all those in addition to these numbers that are given. This is just based on patrons at the ballpark this season. I mean, I can give you guys certainly an in-depth list of all the different mediums. I don't know what kind of time we have or what exactly you guys would like to know, but feel free to ask me any questions on anything that you guys see in your sheets or any information you'd like to know. I'd be happy to answer that for you.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to... I voted no against your ordinance for the money, but you proved us wrong. This is pretty impressive.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And thanks for giving us the opportunity.
Any other discussion? One thing I will, if you'd elaborate on the partnership, you were the host for the UIS and the divisional championship with regards to the NCAA tournament that they, you know, placed first place and then hosted that tournament at Landfair or Robin Roberts.
For sure. No, certainly that was a great event. Knowing that UIS was getting close, you know, a couple of weeks out of their season, we were really trying to work on it, because as long as UIS was the one seed and the best team in D2 in their region, Springfield as a city had the opportunity to host. Since UIS's facility is not capable of hosting that tournament, they don't have lights, bathrooms, things of that nature, enough seating, concessions, things of that nature. I talked to Coach Ramirez, and that was something we really wanted to bring in here. I think bringing in any kind of NCAA event to Springfield is huge. To my knowledge, we haven't had anything to that type of huge success here. So being able to help out UIS, I mean, it didn't turn out exactly as we had hoped. I was hoping they would just win it all by getting the home-field advantage, but I guess Southern Indiana had a slightly different plan. But it was great to host that event. A few thousand people came in for that event. It was across five days, Thursday through Monday for the championship game. The best attended game was Quincy versus UIS. I mean, there was, I think, around 1,200 people there just for that specific game. So that was a good one. Started at 6:00 PM on a Friday, which I think also helped out too. But no, we were really excited to host that NCAA event, and I talked to Coach Ramirez again. I mean, I think everybody plans to try to win their league, but as long as they're up there again, I think that's another event that we're going to be able to host. The NCAA was very pleased with how the operation ran, and they thanked me countless times for being a one-man show. They were like, how can you do all these things? They were like, we've been to so many different facilities that have had 25 workers, and campy as well on top of everything. So we certainly take pride in the ability that we were able to host that here and how well it was received from the NCAA. And I think for sure, if UIS is in the top two, that we have a good chance of being able to host that event again, not just next year, but every year for the future.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Chair will entertain a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the August 8, 2018 meeting of the City Council and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this City Council.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved. Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. Mayor, I'd like to be noted as a no vote on 2018-362. Any other?
I'd like to be noted as a present vote on 361, 362, and 363.
So Alderman Tylin voted no on 2018-362, and Alderman Fulgenzie voted present on 361, 362, and 363.
I'm also a no vote on 362. That's famously...
The double A.
Double A, that's correct.
Okay. And Alderman McMiniman voted no on 2018-362. Any other notes? And the consent agenda passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda number 2017-103, 2017-266, 2017-435, 2017-436, 2017... Agenda number 2017-103, 2017-266, 2017-435, 2017-436, 2017-489, 2018-005, 2018-141, 2018-110, 2018-141, 2018-247, 2018-285, 2018-322, 2018-340, and 2018-366 remain tabled or in committee.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we pull ordinance 218-366 off the table for discussion.
Second.
They're moved in second to pull 2018-366 for discussion. All those.
What does it pertain to?
That is the crack filling ordinance.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
I believe there's people who wanted to address this, Mayor. Am I right about that?
Do we take it for discussion right now?
It's the pleasure.
Put it in order. Do you want to discuss it now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. 2018-366, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW19-06-35 with Denler, Inc. for the fiscal year 2019 crack filling program in an amount not to exceed $364,500 for the Office of Public Works.
I believe the Denmark people are here to talk about this.
Yeah, I believe so. It's David Denler, I think, or someone from, yep, if you'd like to come up, please, and state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
I'm David Denler, owner of the company, Denler Incorporated. Address is 20502 South Cherry Hill Road, Joliet, Illinois.
Thank you. And I know we discussed it last week at committee as a whole, the ordinance, and there's some questions that arose, and.
Sure.
We appreciate you coming. One of those, I believe, was with regards to apprenticeship program. And I think the, just to give a little synopsis, one is last year, you know, we put in the local labor ordinance, which we discussed over the phone, and, you know, it's a work in progress. And so, one of the rubs, I guess, was the 0% participation, and, you know, you can elaborate on that if you'd like, and then, but the other part of it, moving forward, what we want to make sure of is that we have compliance before the ordinance is passed. I think that was kind of a message from the committee as a whole, and if you'd like to touch on that as well with regards to that. And then the Alderman or whoever would, you know, they feel free to discuss and, you know, ask any questions at that point in time.
Sure. So, if I'm.
If you want to give an overview of your company and, you know.
The company was, how far back do we want to go? My dad started it in '67. It's evolved to, I'm the sole owner. We do, we do a lot of maintenance, roadway maintenance. All of our work is public work, just about all of it. We work for municipalities and DOTs and county DOTs. We've done some work for, you know, IDOT, ranging from New Berlin, Wisconsin, to Moline, as far south as Springfield. Predominantly, we do crack filling on roadways. We apply several different types of coatings, and one of the products we use is a mastic, which is on your, on this bid solicitation. The mastic product is a unique product. It's not widely used. It's something that's a very good product. It's catching on. More states are using it, but it just hasn't caught on here in Illinois yet. It will, but it's not yet. We're the only contractor in Illinois that has the equipment to apply this product. We're the only ones in the last couple of years that have bought any of that mastic with any material quantity in the last couple of years. I checked resources to verify before I said that. Last year, the way we read the ordinance and the way I read the bid specs, to me, it was more of a guideline. It was something that you would like to have done. It in no way read in such a way that it was going to preclude me from being a bidder in the future. We chose to include the penalty in our bid and use my guys that are trained and familiar with working on roadways. It's safer. This year, the ordinance read very similar. The first time it came out for bid, it was tabled, or I guess it died in committee or whatever happened to it. It came out, as you all know, the second time around with a change in verbiage, and that change is more directed toward a stronger penalty, which now basically puts the contractor at responsibility of trying to maintain a 50% local workforce. Otherwise, they're going to be banned, or they can be banned, from bidding future projects in the city. We addressed that. I have an avenue to, you know, to make attempts to comply with that. We choose, we are, it's a fluid conversation happening just recently because there's been other parties that would like to have a discussion about that. But the way we put the bid together, we're going to use a labor service, people ready. They have labors, they have some certified traffic control people. They're in compliance. They're a member of ABC, so they're in compliance with the apprenticeship program, as well as I'm in compliance with the apprenticeship program. And so, that would be the path that we would choose to take. We had discussions earlier on the phone. There's been some other, you know, possibilities of, you know, after the fact, I may have discussions with. I am signatory to a labor's local in Chicago. I choose not to sign additional labor agreements throughout the state for every local that we work in. It's a very erroneous thing for a business owner to have to subject themselves to annual audits for every one of these locals that decide that they want to have an audit. They have the right to audit your company whether you do any work within their local or not on an annual basis. So, it's something that we don't have to do, and we choose not to. With regards to that, the local here, he's reached out recently, and we can have some discussions. But in one way or another, we can, you know, move towards a lot better compliance toward your ordinance. With that being said, you know, I'd like to caution you with, you know, that ordinance, you know, that it, you shouldn't look at it as a paintbrush, you know, it's just a, it paints all colors. I mean, it's some contracts that come before you like this one, it may not be that fitting. It's a typical crew size for that mastic, depending on traffic control, would be eight people, six to eight. I wouldn't find it safe to take four people that have never worked with the product before, don't know how to use the equipment, haven't even been on a roadway before, and send them out there. It's not a safe condition. I don't think anybody here would send their kid out with me, right, and that's never had any condition, in that type of condition. The other part of that, as we discussed earlier on the phone, the other thing I think you need to take into consideration is the workman comp rates in Illinois are extremely high, and small companies get dinged heavily with any type of claims. And what you're asking contractors to do is take on people that have no training, that are not their full-time employees, and put them on and take on the responsibility of that workman's comp claim or the potential claim. And it's, if you're on the other side of that, it's a big deal. It's not something to be looked on lightly.
Glad to know if there's questions, Mr. Mayor. Alderman McMinimum, and then Alderman Turner.
Mr. Denner, thank you for traveling here today and for giving us this additional information. I hope there's a way we can pass this ordinance tonight. One of the roads you're working on will be Chatham Road, and it passes through three wards, my ward, Alderman Thailand, and Alderman Donovan's ward. In my seven years on the council, I can't think of any road that's received more complaints and criticism than Chatham Road, the road that you would be working on. It's extraordinarily important that we get that work done. Two weeks ago, by unanimous vote, this council approved an ordinance for an intergovernmental agreement with Leland Grove, because what this city council planned to do was, we would do the work, and then this other jurisdiction would pay us back for the work that would be performed. It's extraordinarily important that we honor our agreement with Leland Grove, among other reasons. I, and as far as safety and such, I did observe the work that you performed last year on Chatham Road, which is two lanes each way, and sometimes there's a suicide lane in the middle. It's a dangerous road. It's a high-traffic road. And I can understand your concern about having a teamwork and individuals that know each other, that can communicate with each other. So, there's got to be reasonableness to our local hiring rule here, and you were willing to pay a penalty, a financial penalty, last year by bringing in your own crew, and this year you're going to try to hire locally. So, I hope there's a way we can pass this ordinance. I know other roads around the city are important to other Aldermen, and Mayor, you're doing, making efforts to help all the areas of town. So, I hope we can pass this ordinance tonight. And if we want to strengthen the penalty for not using all of the goal, not achieving all of the goal, let's go that route, but let's get this ordinance passed tonight. Thank you, Mr. Denner, for coming down from Joliet.
Thank you. Alderman Turner.
It distresses me to hear an Alderman more or less encourage a contractor not to follow the ordinance, but to, but to pay a penalty. That's contrary to what we want to do with our ordinances. So, I'm concerned about that being put forward by an Alderman. I agree with what you said about safety, because I think that's extremely important. And that's one of the reasons why we are interested, very interested, in the apprenticeship piece of the ordinance. So, I agree with you on that piece. I guess what I disagree with you on is that we are encouraging that type of activity on our projects, because that's not the case at all. If individuals, we say that people should participate in an apprenticeship program, and when that happens, we are, you are receiving individuals that are trained and are ready to go out and do the work. So, that's one of the reasons for that. So, please let me finish.
Oh, sure, sure. Sorry.
So, that's one of the reasons why that apprenticeship program piece is in there. And I understand that you are, that you participate in an apprenticeship program in Joliet, but that doesn't do anything to assure that the individuals that would be working on that project here have gone through that apprenticeship program to encourage a safe working environment. So, that's an issue that I discussed in great length last week. The other issue that I have, here you speaking, that you're going to employ a people-ready, which is a temporary service. So, in essence, you would be hiring a subcontractor to take care of your employment situation. So, if that being the case, how would you be able to control payroll, paying prevailing wage, and ensuring that all of the necessary benefits that are required in, by our ordinances are paid?
They are required. They know it's a prevailing wage project. Hall, taxes, healthcare, everything that they do is part of what they're offering. It's part of the service. Labor-ready isn't, that's not a subcontractor. That's no different if I got labors from them, or if I got labors from the hall, from a local laboring, labor hall, or any other employment service.
So, the individuals would be.
They've gone through apprenticeship program.
So, the individuals would be your employees? They would not be labor-ready employees?
No, they're labor-ready employees, but it's a staffing service. I mean, the effect is the same. I am getting employees to do a job that is local residence is what's required.
So, labor-ready is your subcontractor?
They're not a subcontractor. I don't look at them as a subcontractor. It's a service.
Whether or not you look at them as a subcontractor, in essence, they are your subcontractor. And then, so have you, I know that you say that you don't want, for whatever reason, you don't want to work through a local union hall, which is, that's, that's your, you know, if you don't want to do that, that's fine. But we do have in Springfield, a apprenticeship-type program that's affiliated with Lincoln Land Community College, higher education program. Have you talked with anyone?
I was just made aware of that this morning, and as I had mentioned to Mayor, that's something that I can learn more about and understand, yeah. I'm just, again, it's difficult for me to, when I'm taking on the additional burden of the liability of the workman's comp and potential, you know, potential safety issues. When you're standing, you know, again, if you're going to take up to four of these people and put them on a roadway, it's just not logical.
But if you, but if you work with individuals who are affiliated with that apprenticeship program, they are, they are trained.
No, 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 no.
Well, we can agree to disagree, but, and if you say that you don't know about the program.
I do. I don't know about that program, ma'am, but I'm speaking in general terms of the apprenticeship programs that other people have gone through, and my guys, they teach you basics. You don't learn, you don't learn and experience roadwork and safety and what you have to do until you're on it. There's no substitute on the job training for that.
Well, you know, I would, I would agree, I would agree to disagree with you, because you say you're not familiar with the program. I am familiar with the program, and there have been a significant number of individuals that are working now on these very similar projects that have gone through that, gone through that apprenticeship program.
Again, I wasn't made, I have an avenue to satisfy the ordinance, but I, again, I wasn't made aware of that until this morning, the other, the other apprenticeship program.
Right. And I guess I would, you say that you have an avenue to satisfy the ordinance, and I guess I would disagree as well, because I think there are some specifics of the ordinance that you do not, to my satisfaction, have an avenue to satisfy.
And with regards to the local labor ordinance, the importance is someone that has the training. I think the concern of the council is safety, you know, with every, anybody employed. But, so it doesn't necessarily have to be an apprentice right now. It could be an experienced person that's done the work before. And so, I think that's, the concern is making sure that you have a qualified workforce.
Correct.
Alderman Repath.
So, could you explain to me, how long will these, will this job take, and how long will these people be working for you?
The mastic portion, it was a 10 to 12 days.
Okay, so they probably won't collect benefits of any kind other than.
No, no.
The salary?
It's not a long-term job.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Senor.
You say you work for some DOT. I have to tell you that I'm very familiar with your firm, because I'm, I did the prequal for the State Department of Transportation in my other life. So, have you done these types of projects with the Department of Transportation? And what types of, you get graded when you do those projects? What types of grades did you receive on those?
We've gotten, we've gotten good grades on all the ones that we've gotten back. Not all of them turned those in. We've had no issues with anywhere that we've worked. We've worked for a lot of the Coller County DOTs in Chicagoland. We've done work for IDOT. Last year, we did three or four projects. We did a project on IAD for IDOT last year, several out in Peoria area.
So, is it just to this matter, excuse me for my ignorance.
No, no, no.
Is it just to this matter that you didn't hire local labor from the Springfield area, and you brought it, you chose to do the project without, I guess, without regards for feeling that particular part of the ordinance?
Yeah. Are you talking about last year?
Yes, sir.
Yes, last year, the way I read the ordinance, you know, there was a penalty clause to the ordinance, and we felt as far as production and being competitive in a bidding process that we were better off including that in our bid, including the penalty in our bid.
And so, we, I guess, my feeling is that if you chose to willfully just disregard that, what would, what would make us comfortable with you doing the project again this year?
Well, your wording is different on this bid. So, it's, I don't, the way it reads now, I don't have that same outlook. I think it's, the way it's written right now, it's fairly clear.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Alderman Thailand. So, you mentioned that you, because you do work in other states, that you have more experience with mastic than some of these other places.
experience with mastic than some of these other places may, because other states have been more accepting of the mastic process over, um, vacuumed pavement or joint sealing. So, that's?
Yeah, it's just another, it's another, it's another tool in a toolbox.
And, um, so is it, is there only one supplier for mastic, then?
Uh, the material?
Yes.
Uh, there are more than one, but I would, you know, I'd say that, uh, between Maxim and Craftco, they probably have 80, 85, 90% market share of that product. I, I would say a significant share, especially in the Midwest.
And I'm trying to ask this without doing it the wrong way. Corporation Council, if you can assist me here. Um, I had questioned the, the fact that they were about a third less on the unit price on the bid for the mastic, um, supply. And I guess what I'm asking is, is that because of your volume that you do with that dealer? Or is it because it's a different material?
No, I mean, the other, the other bidders that run this bid have never done the work before. And so, like anybody else, and I don't fault them for that, but if they're, they're gonna, there's a, it's something they haven't done before, they're gonna rent the equipment. And there's a buffer in your bid. I mean, you're not, it's, it's different when you've done something and when you haven't done something.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Donlin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, based upon what you had said in your statement, Mr. Denler, I have a question of Corporation Council. Have the rules that were in place last year for residency, when Mr. Denler's company did this project, and the rules, uh, this year for the proposal, have they changed?
The, um, the original bidding documents did not refer to, uh, from, from last year. Did not refer to the, uh, possibility of a bidder who willfully does not comply, uh, being able to potentially be suspended from making future bids. And so, for clarity purposes, what I think, uh, is being referenced here tonight is that on the, uh, most recent bid, there was a reference in there to specifically indicate that, uh, under circumstances where there was an effect viewed as an intentional or willful, uh, uh, non-compliance, then that the city reserved the right to, uh, up to and including, uh, potential suspension, uh, of the bidder's ability to bid in the future. And that was, uh, in the bidding documents. I think that's perhaps what you're referring to.
The rebid for this year?
Yeah.
I appreciate that clarification, but the, the spirit of the code, or the ordinance that was adopted originally, that has, it hasn't changed. And that is the 51% rule. That has not changed, though, has it?
The, or the language of the ordinance itself is the same as last year as to this year?
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Do you know if there's? Yep, come on up. If you'd like, you can come up to the podium and state your name. And if you'd sit right down, they might have further discussion. If you'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, Jake Blickan, Kavanaugh and O'Hara. Uh, we're at 2319 West Jefferson, here in Springfield. Um, I represent the, uh, Springfield Building Trades. That's who I'm, I'm here on behalf of today. Um, I have a little presentation planned, but I'd like to address some of, uh, Mr. Denler's comments before I start. I mean, at first, just as a taxpayer, it's alarming that the penalty was baked into his bid. I mean, that means that the taxpayer's paid his penalty, essentially, is the way, is the way I understood that. But moving on to, to a general matter, um, Mr. Denler indicates he doesn't wanna sign a CBA with the local union because of the, the auditing that the fringe benefit funds do. The fringe benefit funds do audit. They have to audit. If they don't audit, they get in trouble with the Department of Labor. But if your audit's clean, you don't pay any cost to that. So, I'm, I'm a little puzzled as to why that's an issue, if, if we're paying the appropriate rates. But, um, you know, moving on, the, the ordinance, it, as it stands now, requires 50% of the Springfield residents to, to work these jobs. And I have some serious concerns about this temp agency, as Alderman Turner, uh, very lucidly pointed out, that, um, the prevailing wage requires, um, if they're non-union employees, if they don't contribute to a, a fringe benefit fund, you can't put the entire prevailing wage on the check. But if there's a temp agency, I'm not sure how that's gonna work, 'cause they're clearly gonna wanna fee. And, um, I've tried these cases, these prevailing wage cases before. If an employee realizes he's not being paid the correct fee, um, you know, I've personally handled dozens of those cases. And so, that should be a concern from both the city and the, and the contractor. But more importantly, we wanna have appropriately-trained people working on these jobs. And that's why, in a responsible bidder packets, there has to be a participation and a BAT-approved training program. Now, since then, the residency requirements come in, um, residency ordinance has come in, but that's not to replace qualified employees. I mean, the, these ordinances are meant to be read together, not conflicting with each other. And that's what we have here. We've got a contractor who isn't meeting the residency requirements, and now is trying to figure out a way to get, uh, these temporary employees that may not be well-trained to do the job, and more importantly, trained in safety. So, those are two big issues that I see, along with the prevailing wage issues. And, and really, what we want, what the building trades want, what I think everyone wants, is for the city council to enforce these rules uniformly and, um, and completely. And I've been before this council, three or four months ago. Um, in that case, the, the cat was already out of the bag. We were already in the middle, still in the middle of, uh, litigation with, with really no end in sight. But here tonight, the cat's still in the bag. You, you can still follow your ordinances and, um, and not have any issues. And, and, you know, we put our faith in you that, that you'll do the right thing. So, that's all I have to say. Happy answering questions, Chad.
Any questions? Thank you. Anybody else wish to make comments on this? Yep, you can come back up, if you'd like.
Oh, was there any other?
I guess the one is, uh, are you aware if there's a temp fee? I think that's what he brought up, uh, any type of fee? And then, how do you?
Yeah, the, well, that's something that I pay.
Address the benefits portion of it?
They know that it's a prevailing wage, uh, contract, and the, uh, the benefits are separated from their check, just like, just like I would, or anybody else would. So, the, the employees will be paid the proper amount. They, they know the wage rates. Uh, they, I gave them the wage rates bef, you know, when I first talked with them, so they know. They're familiar with it.
So, I guess in your, uh, bid, you built in the prevailing wage rate, the benefits plus a temp fee?
Yes.
And then, what about the train? I think what's really, we're hung up on is, uh, the training and the experience of individuals.
They have, they have, it's an approved apprenticeship program. It's a U.S. Department of Labor-approved apprenticeship program that they're part of. Um, those employees will be, are, are in the same, uh, the same situation of, as any employee coming out of an apprenticeship program. Uh, there, there is no difference.
So, they've already would've gone through the program?
Correct.
And I guess if they haven't, I guess, uh, what happens then? Say, would you go through, 'cause we've done it, you know, with interviews, we, you know, we might have 50 people we interview, come down to it, you might have one. Or what have you, on a job where you're anticipating having six qualified individuals? What if you go through the whole process and you only have one or two? What happens then?
Uh, the discussion I've had, um, with them, it, uh, they didn't give me any indication that there would, and it'd be an issue. I don't need, you know, large volumes of people. I would just be running a single crew. It'd be, you know, no more than three to four.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Cento?
Um, I understand you wanting to use your own people that are trained. I also used to work at IDOT. I understand the value of safety. I understand Alderman McMenamin wanting this project to get done, um, to finish this. But if we're not gonna follow our own rules, then why do we have them? It's a little bit pointless. So, it's just frustrating, as many things are up here, that we have these, these ordinances in place, and then we don't follow them.
I can shed some light on that. And Corporation Council can weigh in to clarify, or Director Mahoney. The initial RP went out, I think it was in the spring. With that, it didn't have the qualifying language that the current one does. And, uh, those were tossed out, uh, in the process. And then, the new one had the restrictive language. But the restrictive language, I don't think, um, our current code, as it's put in, has that restrictive language about banning someone. Is that correct? The current language in the code?
The, uh, the existing ordinance is asked by Alderman Donlin, and is the same as it's always been. There's a, um, I would say, a separate ordinance, uh, uh, having to do with certain, uh, changes that are intended to clarify some of those points. However, the purpose of putting it in the bid was for notice. Uh, in other words, the, uh, one of the, uh, requirements that, uh, a public body has is to make clear both the, uh, specifications and to put the bidder on notice, so they understand the terms and conditions. So, the reason that the, uh, technical, that the changes were made to clarify, uh, the potential, uh, ramifications, uh, was to place all bidders on notice, uh, as to the specific requirements. In other words, that, uh, intentional failure to follow would, uh, could lead to suspension.
So, we're talking about the portion on page seven, then, where it says, "Failure to comply with federal, state, and local laws on prior bids and prior contract work may result in disqualification of a bidder on a subsequent bid."
Yes.
That's the section that we're, and, but you're saying that that has been put on there to put them on notice, that starting with this bid?
Starting with this bid, going forward.
Going forward, could disqualify them.
Yes, because, and again, that, the, the issue came up, uh, slightly, and actually, the mayor asked for us to make sure to insert the language. It went through the normal, uh, uh, process with purchasing, uh, to include that language going forward on all contracts. So, that was to, uh, make certain, to put any bidders on notice, uh, that that could be a potential, uh, ramification for failure to following the specifications.
But it was not in last year's?
That, that is correct.
But it was in the code?
Was it in the code?
There was language in the code that allowed the purchasing agent to consider that factor for, uh, various remedies, one of which was potential, uh, suspension or, uh, prohibition of future bidding, along with other penalties and so on.
Any other discussion or comments? Alderman McMenamin?
Mr. Mayor, the, um, ordinance that we passed two years ago also had language that the purchasing agent or designee shall develop standards and procedures for reducing or waiving these minimum percentages. In other words, the 50% goal of local hiring, the local, uh, agent can, uh, that's our agent, I, I, the contracting agent, um, when a bidder or contractor can demonstrate the impracticality or excessive cost of complying with these percentages levels for particular contracts. Um, I, I think, you know, this was a new ordinance passed two years ago. We're, we're trying to implement it in a reasonable manner. I, I think, uh, oh, Mr. Denler has, has stated he wasn't aware that there'd be any kind of, um, absolute, um, prohibition for him bidding in the future if he failed to meet the requirements last year. But now, as our city attorney has pointed out, we do have that language in our contract that if we fail to meet the minimum employment, the 50% local hiring goal this year, um, Mr. Denler, you're aware, you can be precluded from bidding next year. So, I think, you know, we've, we've toughened, Mr. Mayor, you've, you've toughened the bidding language, Corporation Council. You've, you've put teeth into this in a way that's unmistakable to everyone. And I hope we can, um, Mayor, I hope you entertain a motion to, to, for passage tonight, and, and that our public can, can recognize that we're gonna go ahead and, uh, improve Chatham Road. I say, Chatham Road gets more comments than MacArthur Boulevard. Why? Because the state of Illinois owns MacArthur Boulevard, and most of our constituents know that the state owns, uh, MacArthur Boulevard. And we're not in complete control of, of that, um, road. But Chatham Road, it's, it's entirely the city's responsibility, except for that portion controlled by Leland Grove. And this, again, this body, by unanimous vote, two weeks ago, we said we were gonna cooperate with, uh, Leland Grove to, to get the road fixed. So, um, I, I hope, you know, taking all the concerns into consideration, I hope we can move forward and, and get Chatham Road taken care of, because I think the public will be upset if, if we don't. So, I hope we can get it done.
Any other discussion? Or Director Mahoney, you have anything you'd like to add?
'Cause he gave you that look.
Yeah, just reiterate what we said, uh, last week, how important this project is. I mean, if we don't move forward with this project, it's prob, it's out for this year, next year, and that's gonna cause some issues. Uh, and, and we completely understand the whole local hiring and, and support that. It seems like there's just been, there was probably not enough, uh, teeth in the ordinance as it was written, or incentives, or another way of going about that. And my understanding is, I think Corporation Council and you guys are looking at improving that to go forward. But right now, we're kinda in a situation where we have, uh, a contractor that seems has complied with what we've asked for, as far as, as far as our standards for his public works. Uh, I know there's frustration that they didn't meet that local hiring last time, and there is at least commitment this time to try to meet that. So, from a public work standpoint, we, we desperately wanna move forward on this, 'cause it does cause a lot of the problems. This is preventative maintenance. It's a product that I have, David Whitworth here would be better than I to kinda explain to you why it's so important, what's come up. But if we don't move forward, uh, those conditions change. It's very timely when we do this, so this preventative maintenance. So, what they'll have to do is reassess it next year, and probably the contract will change. Some of these roads that are in that category may not fit that criteria, 'cause what it'll mean is, we'll have to do some type of full-depth patching, or maybe something more drastic. And it's gonna cost the city and the taxpayers, you know, more money in the long run. So, David wants to add anything about the product and why it's important.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, the, the crack filling and the mastic work that we are proposing to do is, um, it, it's one of those two, those are both tools that you want to do at the right time. Uh, particularly with the crack filling, there's a relatively small window of when it's truly effective. And, uh, what, what the crack filling buys us is, uh, for pennies on the dollar, we get an extension of life of approximately seven to eight to 10 years on the asphalt surface. And we also use it to seal the joints in the concrete pavement to keep the water out, because, uh, the water is the enemy of our pavements. And if we can keep the water out, we can make them last longer, which benefits the city financially. It also, uh, keeps the rideability of our roads at a good level. Uh, the mastic product is one that I found out about, uh, maybe a year and a half, two years ago. IDOT contacted me about it, and they were looking at the Craftco product in particular, and wanted to find some test locations to use it. And they've used, uh, some of the Craftco products around here in different locations. They use some, uh, west of town on, on Wabash. And, uh, and then, of course, we used it last year on Chatham Road, and, uh, also on South Grand, underneath the, uh, underpass there between 9th and 11th. Um, what we were planning to do on Chatham Road is get as much of the road done as we can with the mastic this year, so that next year, we can start to overlay Chatham Road in segments that will make an overlay that will cost several million dollars instead of tens of millions of dollars. And that road is ours. We don't, uh, we don't share that cost with anybody else, except for Leland Grove. So, that, that's the importance here. And the other thing, as far as, um, whether we award the contract now, or we rebid it yet again, in some other fashion, is that for this year, uh, we'll, we'll be out of time. It, it takes a good eight weeks to get something from a, um, a bid that's advertised, to get the bids open, and a recommendation to the council, and the council to discuss it and vote on it. And that would put us back to probably October, late October, at this point in time. And there are some temperature requirements with this work. So, you want it to be at least, I think the bare minimum is 40-something degrees Fahrenheit, but you really want it to be warmer than that, at a, at a consistent level, to get this work to, uh, apply correctly.
Alderman Redpath?
So, what's the deadline that they can do this project, that, as far as the cold weather is concerned?
Uh, the, the temperature has to be, the pavement temperatures have to be, uh, in the 40s and above. The air temperature has to be in the 40s and above.
So, September, maybe mid-October?
Yeah, yeah. You're looking at probably, you know, sometimes we'll get some warm weather in the middle of late October, but, uh, we won't, it needs to be warm, it needs to be dry. And that's what we're looking
Okay.
And that's what we're looking at.
Like, what the question is, can we wait till the next council members are meeting September 5th and still meet the needs of this year?
Well, we've got, we've got about probably three weeks-
Especially with, how long does Chatham Road take?
Probably about three weeks.
Three weeks, yeah.
And then, and then we've got the rest of the crack filling on the asphalt and the, and the concrete streets. And that'd probably take another three weeks or so. So, that, you know, that, that puts us to the latter part of October, probably. So, I wouldn't, I mean, technically, yeah, it would be possible, but I certainly wouldn't recommend it at this point.
Alderman Donnellan, and then Hannah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for, David, just for a point of clarification again, could you, could you mention, we obviously talked about Chatham Road, the other streets that are involved in this?
Yeah. Some of the other streets that are involved, let's see, Chatham Road is obviously the big one for the mastic. We actually have some sections on Greenbrier that we want to do the mastic on, and on Ash Street as well. And actually, there's an alley behind the parking garage over there that is, it's a concrete alley, and I don't want to tear the whole thing out, because there's a million utilities in there, and it would be much better served if we could get mastic in some of that.
Did you say alley?
Yeah.
I love alleys. My favorite.
Alderman, Hannah.
That's a special one, because it's a concrete alley, and it is right downtown full of utilities. So, yeah.
Dave, thank you for coming up. Now, you had said that you thought the job was only going to take 10 to 12 days, and you're here, you're talking weeks.
Well, that was, the Chatham Road and the mastic is, is one section of it, and I, I would anticipate that would probably take about three weeks. Is that fair?
I think I had a figure for 12, 13 days, and it's-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two and a half, and you've got weather issues that could come up, that you can't do it when it's raining.
Yeah.
You know.
There's also some roads in Lincolnshire that need to be-
Yeah, there's some, there's some streets in Lincolnshire. See, this is where we put the $87 million into the big ramp up a few years ago, and, and now's the time to get a lot of those roads crack filled, so that we can maintain that pavement, so we're not looking at resurfacing them yet again. We want to push that out as far as we can.
Right. I have one other question from, from Mr. Dunbar. You had said-
Denler.
I'm just, real, real quick, I just, did you add any, any fees into your bid for, for penalties-
No.
-that you may pay this year?
No.
You didn't?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make any comments? Come up, state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, just for transparency, I'm going to be voting present on this contract, not because I don't like anything that's going on, it's just because of the position I'm in at DCT.
Yeah, it's up for discussion right now.
Good evening. James Johnson, City Residence. I wasn't going to speak on this tonight, but sitting here and listening to Joe McMiniman discuss how important a road to get fixed is more important than a local person, citizen of Springfield, to have a job. So, I'm going to speak, and I'm going to take five minutes, and I'm going to address you and this gentleman here.
Just point of order, there's no personal attacks.
So, I want you to hear this too.
Hope the discussions would be general, we want to make them constructive.
Mayor, it's going to be general, but I'm going to say what I got to say.
Sure. And just point of order, our bidder says he's going to hire a local gym, and I'm in favor of that. So, you know, we can't talk about the past, we, we didn't, you know-
That ain't what you're saying, Joe, but we're, we're not going to discuss it, because see, that clock is ticking, and you're on my time now. So, I'm appalled that an out-of-town person would come in here and say that our apprenticeship program, let me, let me back up. I know a whole bunch of people that have went through this apprenticeship programs in, in the Sagamon County area, me being one. And I'm appalled, it's a smack in my face to say that what program I went through is not good enough to work for his company. So, if that's your opinion about us as citizens and local labor, you don't need to come to our city and work. I've been on highways, I've been on city streets, and yeah, it's very dangerous, but you know what's dangerous is about it? It's the people that are on their phones and they're driving through, and nobody's doing nothing about that. That's what's dangerous, people that aren't paying attention. So, he's right about that. It's very dangerous. But for Alderman to say that this road is more important, this man is talking about 10 days worth of work, 10 to 12 days, that's a week's worth to pay for a union person. That's feeding somebody's family, that's paying somebody's bills, that's going to spend their money right back here in Sagamon County. His people going to take their money and go right back to Joliet. So, yeah, I'm PO that this is even a discussion, that my brothers and sisters got to sit on the, sit on the bench, because he want to come here and do work and then leave. We ain't going to never like that. If I'm hungry and I can't pay my bills, I ain't going to never like them coming in our town. And y'all shouldn't either. Now, I give a darn if Chatham gets fixed if, if we can't get something, some, some, some money to put in our, in our pockets. And then they saying about this work needs to get done by a certain time? Yeah, okay. You want to use this mastic stuff. My guess is, it's coming off the truck kind of hot. If I'm, if I'm wrong, correct me. So, the temperature of it is going to fill the cracks. So, I don't know why our city people up here talking about, we got to do this in a certain amount of time. You got plenty of time. You got at least up to November to discuss this and do this. And this, whatever this new stuff he's using, this mastic, I want some, Alderman, I want the health effects of this stuff that they're using. Find out what the MSDS sheet is all about. I want to know how much asbestos is in this mastic, if any, but I know about mastic. So, give us all this information, but I'm going to be the first one citizen to stand up here and say, you're not welcome if we can't work in our own city. Done.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Alderman McMiniman.
I greatly respect Mr. Jim Johnson, and I know you're a member of Labor's 477, and I've-
You have to address my union out your mouth.
That's all right.
And I respect the work I've seen you visibly do on South State Street. And I, I think we've got a commitment from this bidder, he's going to hire a local labor, and, well, he's going to hire folks with a local, that have local residential addresses, and it's going to be, it can be audited. And so, just wanted to clarify that, that your goals, Mr. Johnson, are being met by, by the way this bid has been drafted and by our ordinance. And, and I, I'm not sure if you were here last week, Mr. Johnson, but this bidder came in at 20% less than the other two bids, and we've got to also watch the dollars, because if we're, if we're going to save 20% on this bid, that's 20% of money we can spend on other local projects using local labor too, so we can put more people to work. So, we got to watch the dollars. Our citizens want us to watch the dollars. We, we can get more work accomplished, is what I'm saying, more projects accomplished. So, just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
Mayor, it's my intent to take the ordinances coming up after this one and send it back to committee. We've discussed that we want to rework this. This is the penalties and the labor agreements that, that we've been working on for such a long time. And I think we're close to getting that ordinance ready to come back to the council, and I've requested that you meet with a couple of us to work that out, and you agreed to do that. So, with that, I'm going to ask that we leave this, 2018-366 in committee for at least one more term, and then we'll come back and address it again. So, that's my motion, is to hold it in committee.
So, it's just for discussion, so it just goes back to committee? Do we have to take a vote?
Correct. If, if the discussion is, just from, yeah, just from a parliamentary point of view, the motion was to discuss this topic. If the topic is, if, if the debate is, is finished, then no further action is taken, because there's not been a motion to discharge from committee.
But for point of information, if a motion is made and seconded for, for passage, it automatically goes to the vote, correct?
No, because it's not out of committee.
Okay. So, we have to still vote to pull it out of committee?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
There's a motion for discussion, which passed. Discussion has taken place. There would have to be a motion to remove it from committee. If there's no such motion, then it would simply remain in, in committee to be acted on in the future.
Thank you for your clarification.
Mr. Mayor, what do you wish to do with this ordinance? What do you wish?
I'm fine to leave it for now until September 15th, but I, hopefully, we'll have action on September 15th, or, I'm sorry, September 5th, or whatever that date is for the first council meeting in September.
Well, Mr. Mayor, that jeopard, according to what we heard from our engineers, that jeopardizes the potential accomplishment of the mission of the project this year. It could impede the work next year and make the work more expensive next year, because the crack filling is time limited. So, I think that's a risky way for us to go. And I hope the, the voters and the taxpayers are following this discussion.
I guess if the Aldermen are comfortable, I mean, if you have the six votes, I think you can go forward with it, but my preference is for a successful resolution to move forward. And I think what the discussion was, there's plenty of time, I think the temperature has to, surface temperature is 40 degrees. So, September, you know, it'd be kind of a stretch to think that the temperature's going to drop below that point in time. But I think we have plenty of time to move forward. I think what we want to do is be cautious, make sure we make the best decision to move forward together. I think that's the best option. Unless somebody, there's others that feel differently, you can make the motion for approval and get a second and vote on it, but that's up to the Alderman.
I agree with you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if you think there's no votes for this, let's, let's put it off.
I'm not sure. I mean, you know, sometimes, as you said last week, sometimes I have the votes and sometimes we don't. So, I don't count votes. What I do is, I present the information, and Aldermen make the most informed decisions so they can discuss it and explain it to the constituency. That's how, I've never lobbied for votes. I always present the information so you can make the informed decision. That's what this is all about. So, what I've heard tonight, there's still some unanswered question. I think that really the key component is to answer the question of experienced individuals being on the job site. I think that's the key component, because nobody wants an accident happening. I think that's the whole key to that, and moving forward and compliance with the, and I think the gentleman said he's going to comply, but I think the unanswered question is the individuals that would be carrying out the local portion of it. Alderman Turner.
And you're absolutely, absolutely correct. That's, that's my major concern, and I think that all of us are concerned about the safety of the people who are going to be working, working on this project. And there is a reason why the ordinance was crafted in the way that it was crafted, to ensure that qualified individuals who are trained in their craft would be working on these projects. And, you know, I, I hear Alderman McMiniman saying that he hopes that the public is aware of, of, that the streets is not going to get, may not get repaired, and that it may cost us more in the future if we put this off. But I think all of us have a constituency, and my constituents are equally concerned about the equitable way in which the city does its business. So, when I, the comments that I make and the votes that I take, I am speaking with and acting on behalf of my constituency.
Any other discussion?
Alderman McMiniman.
Mr. Denler, thank you for coming down here from Joliet, and giving your best efforts. I think you've made a compelling case. You've got a unique process, you've got unique equipment, safety's important for you, and I hope we can resolve the, the training issue, and that the members of the council can be convinced that you will hire local, and they'll be sufficiently knowledgeable about the procedure to do it effectively and to get the job done.
Yeah, thank you for coming and explaining what your company does, we really appreciate it. Any other discussion?
Alderman Seenor.
I, I do know you do work, you do it well, you have above-average ratings, and I think this is just a matter of clearing up some, get some clarification on how we want the contract to read and go forward. So, I appreciate you coming down and presenting your case also.
Any other discussion? Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is 2018-360, an ordinance amending Chapter 38, Section 138.16 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to purchasing contracts. Chair will entertain a motion-
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we return this back to committee?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. Are we any closer to having an amendment for the, the formula that was listed on Section B?
We are working on some language, and that will be one of the items that we can address in committee.
Okay. Because I really like Alderman Donnellan's suggestion from last week, where they put real numbers in there to show how the formula works and what it would be on $100,000, because I think one of the concerns that we all share is that we don't want to see this being, we don't want the teeth being taken away. We need, we need to have teeth on this, or it's useless.
But Alderman, we also need to work out the, the logistics of how we're going to, you know, allow, we, we got to have the teeth into it, but the, the bottom line is, is we're, we're trying to make sure that we, we can uphold our, our residency thing. That's a big deal. And we've, I've, I've talked to the mayor a little bit about this, and hopefully, we can pound that out within this next week or so.
Any other discussion? All those in favor returning back to committee, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on First Reading Agenda Number 2018-384, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding with Sagamon County, Illinois, to reallocate funds received in connection with the 2018 Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program, 2018-H2925-I-L-GJ from the U.S. Department of Justice.
Been moved and seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on First Reading Agenda Number 2018-385, an ordinance authorizing a request for approval of change in plans of a contract PW 18-01-68, with additional payment in the amount of $1,76,539.16 for a total not to exceed $7,933,546, I'm sorry, $7,933,546.50 to PH Breton &amp; Sons, Inc., for, by two minutes overlay on various streets during the 2018 construction season for the Office of Public Works. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on First Reading Agenda Number 2018-386, an ordinance amending Chapter 37 by adding Section 37.64 of the Office, or of 1988 City of Springfield, Illinois Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to financial assistance for-profit and non-for-profit organizations, clubs, and groups.
Been moved and seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business come before the city council?
Yes, Mayor.
Alderman Tyler.
Seems how, I think he may have escaped on us. Scott Dahl is in, working with CBB now, and I do have to congratulate him on, I saw the notice about Amy Beadle being hired for the sales manager. I think that was a really good move on his part. But I would like to have him start looking at 2018-247 and 2018-285.
Scott?
2018-247 is the ordinance established in the Convention and Visitors Advisory Board, and 2018-285 is the one about adding criteria for how to, when granting funds from the revenue generated from hotel motel tax. I'd like to start moving forward on those, maybe even-
as early as next week on committee. So, Scott, if you want to call me on 285, I'd be, I'm the sponsor, I'd be happy to work with you on that. And Mayor, I'd love to see some traction going on 247 as well. I think we just need to let him hit the ground running.
Any other unfinished business? Alderman, McMiniman.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to share some more information about our residency requirement. A few weeks ago, we posted a job opening for a meter reader at City Water, Light, and Power, and an individual asked me to inquire how many individuals applied for that position. And the number of applications is worth noting, more than 500 applied for that position. More than 500 applied for a single opening at our utility. And so, the good news is that ultimately, a Springfield resident is going to get that job. And if they're not a Springfield resident, they got one year to move in. And that's called economic development, because, Mr. Mayor, thank you for leading the effort with the ordinance. I mean, others worked on it collectively before that. But it, ultimately, 20 years from now, we're going to have 500 employees living within the city limits that previously now are not living in the city limits. And any, we all know that the more people live within our city limits and are circulating their money within our city boundaries, that's called economic development, it's called money moving around in the city. So, thank God, we got this, we got valuable jobs in the city, and they're going to city residents. And that's a, an important step forward.
Thank you very much. Any other unfinished business? Any new business come before the City Council? This weekend's the bicentennial Blues and BBQ on Friday and Saturday, and then the bicentennial plaza officially opens up, I think it's 3:00 Sunday, is, they're going to have a ceremony with, I think the U of I band's going to be there, and a flyover, things of that nature.
It's 1:30.
So, all are welcome.
No, it's the reception.
I think it's 3:00 is the ceremonial part, and then activities afterwards. Any other new business? Anybody wish to address the council? I don't think anybody else has signed up.
Move adjourned.
Oh, wait a second, wait a second. I think, who signed up?
Carolyn Brown.
Yep. Anybody wish to address the City Council?
Second.
All, motion to adjourn?
Been moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, say nay. We're adjourned. Thank you.